We're a little, starting a couple of minutes behind here, I apologize. So at this point. I don't understand either. So I'd like to kind of entertain here a roll call vote to kind of open the public meeting here because we are coming from executive session. We did close out executive session. So if we can get a roll call vote here to open up the meeting, that would be great.
Will Stinklet?
Here.
Steve Sylvia?
Yeah.
Jean Box?
Here.
Steve Owen?
Here.
Sherri Barry?
Here.
Ben Zablam?
Here.
Bob Clark? John Burke?
Here.
Awesome. So obviously, district leadership is present. Mrs. Strauss, Ms. Fleming, Ms. Deirdre Welsh, Ms. Buleg is here as well. I just have to ask, anyone recording the meeting this evening? Thank you, sir. Yep, Lake Cam, Ms. Barefoot as well. Thank you. Perfect. All right. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, that's fine. No worries. No worries there. All right. So, item number four on the agenda, I think I can speak for the entire committee when I say this is probably our all-time favorite agenda item, being the fact that we get to celebrate tonight the Aponiquet Regional High School Class of 2023 Top Ten Student Awards. So, welcome. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms...
Dessert.
Dessert? That's okay. No, no worries.
Everything prepared, right? Top ten? There's always something. Thank you very much. I'm very proud to announce the top ten students for our graduating class. A very, very competitive class, both in academics and spirit, I would say. So, without further ado, I'm going to call them ten through one, if that's okay with you. So I am going to call up Ms. Rebecca DiClemente.
Good evening. I am Rebecca DiClemente, and after striving to do my best, I now proudly stand before you as number ten in the class of 2023. As a side note, I apologize to the numerous faculty who I spoke to during the period of time in which I was stressed about my class rank, afraid I would not make the cut. However, now standing here, I am proud of the hard work I put in to make it this far. Throughout my four years in the school, I've been a member of the volleyball team, student council, a class representative of the student government, a Laker leader, and the secretary of the National Honor Society. Throughout these many involvements, I've been granted many wonderful memories, but the ones I hold closest to my heart are the ones I have with my friends playing volleyball and during school when we would joke around. These fun and relaxing times also presented me with the opportunity to take a break from academics. Throughout my four years here, I've taken numerous honors courses alongside four AP classes, and because of this hard work, I've maintained high honors over the years. Even during difficult classes such as AP Spanish and AP Calculus, the teachers have helped me outside of class to understand the material better. While there are numerous faculty members that I credit for helping me to succeed, Mrs. Gray, Mrs. Nardi, Mrs. Pacelli, Mrs. Tavoris, Ms. Ball, and Ms. Cowley have helped me immensely during the comprehension and completion of my schoolwork, including helping to relieve me of the stress I unknowingly add to myself. Ms. Cowley especially as my volleyball coach greatly helped me to become more confident in myself and my work, whether academically or physically on the court. I can't thank these faculty members enough, and I greatly appreciate the confidence they had in me that I would do the best I could. And finally, without a doubt, I can't thank my parents enough for the love and support they have given me. Even during times when the stress seemed like too much, they would remind me that as long as I tried my best, they would always be proud of me. I would also like to thank my friends who have given me the opportunity to relax and have always looked out for me, as well as helped me study for AP Calculus and AP Spanish tests during late-night study sessions. I am forever grateful for these significant people in my life, and I will miss them very much, but I plan to hold on to all those special memories. In the fall, I plan to attend St. Joseph's College of Maine with a double major in finance and mathematics. But before I leave Aponiquet, I would like to leave one piece of advice to the school committee. Throughout my time at Aponiquet, I am sad to say that I witnessed multiple accounts of cheating in classes without any repercussions. Cheating itself does not align with the ARHS core value of honor, nor will it help these students in the coming future. Students have disclosed to me that they saw someone cheating on a test, and even after informing their respective teacher, there was still no action taken to address the situation. This lack of accountability creates more issues and is not fair to students who do the work. By condoning this inexcusable behavior, students will continue to cheat with no consequences. Academic integrity is of utmost importance and is advised to become a more important focus. While this cheating does not help students to properly retain knowledge, it will also not help to develop study skills essential to their future education. I hope after informing you all of this concern, you will make this a focus for the benefit of the students' education, work ethic, and the reputation of Aponiquet in the coming years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all and for your time this evening.
Thank you, Rebecca. And ninth in the class, Sofia Coranos.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sofia Coranos. Before I begin, I would just like to say thank you to the school committee for inviting me up here to speak. With that being said, I would also like to acknowledge Superintendent Strauss and Mrs. Dessert for all that they have done and will continue to do for the students within the district. I first started at FLRSD in preschool and have grown up in the district my whole life. I attended Freetown Elementary up until the second grade and transferred to Assawamset for third grade. Finally, at the intermediate school, I was reunited with my friends. Although I have received a combination of honors, high honors, and highest honors every semester at Aponiquet, my achievements stretch past that. I am the recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. I am a two-time recipient of the JA Titan Virtual Business Challenge Scholarship. I have received the ARHS STEM Award for Biology, Engineering I and Engineering III. As a member of DECA for the past four years, I've been a four-time district competitor, four-time state competitor, and two-time national competitor. This includes being a four-time district winner and two-time state champion. Without a doubt, these past four years at Aponiquet have not always been easy academically. I have taken a combination of seven AP classes. Out of these classes, my most difficult class was AP US History. I have learned much more from that class than I ever thought was possible. Mr. Coett and I might not have always seen eye to eye, but he taught me to look for the meaning in life. There is always a reason for why people do what they do. His class taught me that grades are just numbers. In the big scheme of things, it doesn't matter if you're first or last. What matters is how you learn from experiences and mistakes. Through his class lessons, he always taught every student to seek happiness. I could not have gotten through high school without the help of my teachers. My freshman year biology teacher, Mrs. Bevis, helped me find my passion for science and experiments. My STEM motivation continued to grow even more with my math teachers, Mrs. Pacico, Mrs. Pacelli, and Mrs. Gray. These teachers would not only help me when I was struggling in class, but also connect the classroom to the real world. Their welcoming and friendly smiles, along with whatever silly side conversation we would get into, would always make me excited to be in school. As I mentioned before, I was a member of DECA. The DECA experience was unparalleled to anything else because of the advisors. Mr. Rosa and Mrs. Cronin always believed in me. Since they believed in me, it allowed me to believe in myself. When I would get too stressed out, they would always remind me to just relax and have fun with my friends. And of course, whenever Mrs. O'Brien traveled on a trip with us, the whole club would always talk to her, and she would instantly put a smile on all of our faces. I would not be where I am today without my family and friends. I would like to say thank you to my mom and dad for always pushing me to try my hardest, my sister Alex for teaching me to be independent, and my sister Victoria for always being brutally honest with me, even when it hurts to hear. After graduation, I plan to major in Chemical Engineering at the University of Delaware. Before I officially graduate from the district, a piece of advice for the school committee is to continue expanding the course curriculum at Aponiquet. As someone interested in Chemical Engineering, it was an amazing opportunity to be offered to take the new course of Engineering III this year. When it comes to classes, the teachers are the most important part. I also think it was a remarkable idea for my AP Psychology class to undergo a mock lesson with a prospective new teacher. Student feedback is extremely important because it is the students' connection with a teacher that fuels their passion for school. Thank you all again for inviting me tonight. It was an honor to have spent these past four years at Aponiquet.
Thank you, Sofia.
Ms. Dessert, I have to correct this, and shame on me for botching our first kind of top ten here as chair. So Sofia and Rebecca, can you just come up and we're going to shake your hand. We do have a little gift for you. And then the rest of the top ten, when you are finished speaking, can you just come up? We will shake your hands, congratulate you. And then you get to see this wonderful gentleman to my left for a gift, okay? So you can either come out now or wait till the end, whatever you feel comfortable with, that's fine.
Why don't you have him come up now and then we just keep going?
That works. Sure. Thank you.
Hey, congratulations.
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 Congratulations on your luck.
Thank you, Ms. Dessert.
Top eight in the class is Mary Tomaszewski.
Good evening. My name is Mary Tomaszewski. I am number eight in the class of 2023. I am a former member of the Aponiquet Girls Basketball Team and currently a member of the National Honor Society and the Lakers Inspiring Friends in Richmond Club here at Aponiquet. Many of my peers know me as the math and science nerd, and if I'm being honest, I kind of like this title. I like knowing that if people ever need help with a problem, they know to come for me, come to me for guidance. This love for STEM has led me to receiving a science award this year to recognize my hard work in the Advanced Placement Physics course. With that being said, this award wasn't easy to achieve. AP Physics is one of the most difficult classes I have taken in my time here at Aponiquet. I had developed a liking for physics in my junior year and was lucky enough to continue it into my senior year in a more demanding course. In addition to AP Physics, I have taken five other AP courses, which have also been very difficult. I believe my most difficult course of all would have to be my AP US History course in junior year. I have never really loved history, so it made it a lot more difficult for me to stay motivated through the year. However, I kept working as hard as I could and did well in the class and passed the exam at the end of the year. I don't think I could have made it through my time here with such a demanding schedule if I didn't have such supportive teachers. Two teachers that have really stood out to me are Mrs. Mills, my AP and honors physics teacher, and Mrs. Gray, my AP Calculus teacher. These two women have fueled my love and passion for STEM. They know my potential and push me to do even better. They were both part of one of my favorite memories here at Aponiquet. In October of 2022, all the girls in my physics class were given the opportunity to attend a field trip. It was a Girls in STEM Summit. We all noticed the field trip was on a Sunday, and it would last all day, so many of us were questioning if we would want to wake up that early on a weekend, but a few of us still decided to go. We spent the day at Wentworth Institute of Technology and heard from many different women in STEM careers. We participated in activities and experience, and overall, it was a really fun experience that I got to enjoy with my friends and favorite teachers. It gave me the chance to explore my love for STEM and the different paths I can take in my future. In addition, I got to build stronger bonds with my teachers and friends. I want to thank those teachers that have encouraged me through my four years here and the friends that have reminded me to take breaks and have fun at times. I would also like to thank my parents and my three sisters that have made me the person I am today and have supported me through everything and will continue to be there as I continue my education. Next year, I will be attending Worcester Polytechnic Institute, where I plan on majoring in Mathematical Sciences. After mentioning my love for STEM throughout this whole speech, I felt it was fitting that my one recommendation to the school committee would be to try to put a bigger emphasis on encouraging young girls to pursue STEM by offering courses at younger ages. I recently completed my senior research project, and my main goal was to learn how to encourage more girls to love STEM, and I found that incorporating programs, classes, and clubs at younger ages can really make a difference. I care a lot about this topic, and I hope you will consider trying to put more emphasis on it in order to make an impact on the STEM field. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I really appreciate being given this opportunity.
Thank you, Mary. Number seven is Abigail Menendez.
Good evening. My name is Abigail Menendez. Next year, I am attending UMass Amherst to major in Mechanical Engineering. My journey in choosing a college was much like that of high school. Long and sometimes difficult, but by all means worth it. In my four years at Aponiquet, I have been granted a multitude of unique opportunities because I chose to get involved in several extracurricular activities. First off, I have been part of the soccer and lacrosse teams for all four years. Being part of a sports team has taught me leadership, teamwork, and discipline. It has not always been easy as a student athlete, but I strongly believe that it has always been worth the effort. I am grateful for receiving the award of South Coast Conference All-Star for soccer as a junior and senior and for lacrosse as a junior. Additionally, the soccer team were conference champions this year. Sports have always been a part of my life for as long as I can remember, and I'm happy to say that I'm leaving high school with a positive impact in sports. Aside from sports, I have also been heavily involved in clubs such as DECA, National Honor Society, where I am vice president, student government, where I am class secretary, student council, and Green Team. DECA specifically has made such a tremendous impact on my high school career. I have been given the opportunity to travel to Atlanta, Georgia, and Orlando, Florida in order to compete in the International Career Development Conference. Some of my fondest memories have been those spent on DECA trips. The DECA advisors, Ms. Cronin and Mr. Rosa, have always supported my journey in DECA and have offered an open door for any needs that I had. As great as our love for DECA is, I have always believed that the school does not see the same value. Traveling for DECA has been a great expense, and expense is often the cause that drives students away from participating. I have learned real-life problem-solving as well as business and presentation skills that I believe will be key in almost any career that one may choose to pursue. In many other schools, DECA has given funds or opportunities to fundraise to help support the students that compete, yet Aponiquet has not been given these same options. It is for these reasons that I hope you consider a way to help DECA and allow more students to get involved. On the other hand, the academics at Aponiquet have never been something to complain about. Although there should be more AP classes offered sooner because it is difficult to apply to college from a very small school where there are not so many chances to differentiate yourself from other students. However, the classes that are offered for the majority are taught well. In fact, there are more classes I wish I had time to take. That being said, some of the classes that did stand out to me include leadership, criminal law, and physics. I was glad to take several of Mr. Solomon's elective courses where I learned about leadership, creativity, and the legal system. It is through Mr. Solomon's unique electives that I have been able to enjoy mock trials and leadership campaigns. I took these courses during junior and senior year, my most stressful years, and they always brought joy and entertainment to my day. As for physics, I am biased because I want to major in engineering, but it is ultimately the teacher that made the class. I have had Mrs. Mills for honors physics and AP Physics. The demonstrations that she showed always interested me and generated a greater curiosity for science and how science influences the past, present, and future. Her assignments are challenging and require thought and sometimes teamwork to help find a solution. Finally, I would like to highlight the guidance department. As a student athlete with divorced parents, two younger siblings, club soccer, and a job, I have sometimes had difficulties at school. I had Ms. Graff as a soccer coach and have found it easy to reach out to her with any concerns I've had, no matter the issue. Whether it is sports, college, or personal issues, she has been extremely helpful in not only finding solutions to my issues, but also guiding me to find a solution myself. Additionally, I have found myself conversing with all the guidance counselors and have always felt heard and valued by each of them. I am extremely grateful for the staff at Aponiquet and throughout the Freetown Lakeville School District. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Abby. Number six, Kaitlin Hague.
Good evening. My name is Kaitlin Hague, and I am very grateful to be here tonight. First off, I would like to thank the school committee for extending an invitation to speak tonight. Throughout my four years at Aponiquet, I've been a member of the Green Team's student government, National Honor Society, and the class of 2023 is representative for the school council. I was also a student athlete who competed on the girls varsity soccer team and was selected as captain for my senior year. Just this past fall, the girls' team won conference and made it to the second round of playoffs. Some of my fondest memories of Aponiquet were on the field. I remember my coach telling us that we had to win the rest of the games in order to win the conference. This gave the whole team motivation to continue playing at their highest level, even though weeks later, Coach Ireland would explain to us that we had already won conference, and he just wanted us to continue working hard so we would be ready for the playoffs. In addition to athletics, I took honors in AP classes throughout high school. The coursework was interesting and always left me asking questions about the bigger picture. One thing that I wish we could have had, however, in is AP classes in freshman and sophomore year. I think it would be beneficial for those years to experience those difficult classes early on in order to better prepare for college. I strongly believe that in AP courses, students learn how to better manage their time and learn in a broader context. These courses also allow students to earn credits in college and give the opportunity to impress admissions counselors. I took a variety of AP courses, and among those most challenging was AP Chemistry. All year, we prepared ourselves for the AP exam, and without a doubt, I had never experienced a class where I needed to put in hours upon hours of studying in order to succeed. This class required mental toughness and resilience. In addition to AP Chemistry, I took AP US History in my junior year. This class was by far the best and most interesting course I had ever taken. In this class, I learned about triumphs and failures and how injustice has been prevalent throughout history. The teacher of this class, Mr. Coett, taught us that history matters. The past shows us where we have been, and from there, we decide as individuals to stay the same or change for the better. Mr. Coett was incredibly influential in my decision to study criminal justice in college. Through his course, I learned that the world will not get better without people helping each other instead of hurting each other. Another member of the school has impacted my life significantly is Ms. Kirk. I took her AP Environmental Science course this year. She taught me that science extends beyond the classroom and the impact of society on the world. Everything we consume and everywhere we go affects the art that takes care of us. I thank her for teaching me the importance of protecting the environment and society and the world. I think many teachers have left lasting impacts on my life, but these two have helped my growth in becoming a member of society that cares about others in the world that provides for us. Finally, I would like to thank my mom, dad, and brother for supporting me in everything I do, especially my brother Josh. You have been my shoulder to cry on and best friend throughout my years in school. Without their continued support, I would never have succeeded in the way I did. In the fall, I will be attending Dean College, where I plan to major in both Psychology and Criminal Justice. In college, I will also play on their women's soccer team. Thank you for listening to me this evening, and I have a great night.
Thank you, Katie. And number five, we have Lucas Quinn.
Good evening, everyone. I am Lucas Quinn, a member in the top ten of Aponiquet's class of 2023. I have attended Aponiquet for the last four years, and in that time, I've been able to balance academics, athletics, and other extracurricular activities similar to the other students with me today. This is in part due to the support I have received from teachers, coaches, guidance counselors, family, and friends alike, and I'd like to thank you all for being with me today. As far as academics go, I've taken six AP classes in the school, received three science departments awards for honors Biology, AP Environmental Science, and honors Physics, and have been awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship for MCAS testing. In the world of athletics, I've been a three-season runner for four years, earning varsity honors for all four years of cross-country, and earning those honors for my past two years of winter and spring track. Regarding other clubs and activities, I've earned scholarships through junior achievement, competed in DECA at an international level, and have recently received recognition for scholastic excellence as a member of the school's NHS chapter. Fortunately, I'd like to think I've had a positive high school experience overall. Some of my fondest memories include going on runs with my teammates on campus and attending, as well as assisting school events like pep rallies and game nights. A few of the most rewarding classes I've taken are AP US History and AP Psych, taught by Mr. Coett and Mr. G. Orlando respectively. Both classes have structured learning, at least in my eyes, in a way that allows me to apply topics outside of the classroom, which is a skill I find to be invaluable. I'd like to thank all of my teachers and mentors once again for putting me in the position I am today. I'd like to especially thank Mr. Rosa, Mr. Solomon, and Mr. Rutledge, who are each teachers at the school, but also take time out of their days to run clubs or sports that I have been a part of since my freshman year. I'd also like to thank my family, and I couldn't have made it here without your support. This fall, I will be attending the Commonwealth Honors College at UMass Amherst, and I'll look to build, bring my knowledge and memories from Aponiquet with me. If there's one thing I'd like to leave you with, it's this: give students more opportunities to get involved. School spirit has always been a value to me, and it's apparent that students are more likely to be successful when they feel comfortable, proud, and enthusiastic in their environment. So whether it be more student-led organizations or events, fundraisers or athletics, each new opportunity is a chance for students to delve deeper into their passions and in turn forge a path for themselves and those that follow behind them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas. Number four, Jocelyn Carvallo.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to share my experience at Aponiquet and in the Freetown Lakeville School District. My name is Jocelyn Carvallo, and I'm number four of the class of 2023. I have been a student in this district since kindergarten, and I am incredibly grateful for my time here. As an involved student at Aponiquet, I have participated in many clubs such as student council, the math team, and DECA. I also swam on the Lakers swim team for all four years of high school, and this past year, I was captain. And aside from school activities, I am a Girl Scout of thirteen years, and I will soon be bridging to adulthood. I have received many awards for my hard work and passion at school. I earned four awards from Aponiquet Science Department for my success in honors Biology, Chemistry, Physics, and Engineering. In addition, I was bestowed with highest honors from the Society of Women Engineers last year for my performance in STEM classes. Recently, I also received the award for exemplifying the Tenet of Character at the NHS Court Ceremony. For my swim team, I earned the Coaches of War twice, and in DECA, my partner and I have competed nationally at the International Career Development Conference after placing at the state's level competition. Many of my most cherished memories come from my experiences in this school district. While a lot of my favorite days of school were when we attended field trips, I also enjoyed the quiet days of learning and talking to my friends. Some of my favorite memories include gym class in elementary school, field day at the intermediate school, the field trip to the mall in sixth grade, playing Kahoot in Spanish classes, and the recent honorable competitions this year. My most challenging classes were definitely the AP classes I have taken these past two years. One of the hardest of these was AP Biology, but I can confidently say that my hard work in the material and the labs in this class made it memorable and helpful for my future endeavors in college. I also want to recognize one of my favorite classes overall, which is AP Psychology, because of the material itself and the way it was taught. Moving on to my most influential teachers at Aponiquet and in the school district, I first want to thank I first want to thank my AP Psych teacher, Mr. G. Orlando, or as we call him, Mr. G. Mr. G. is a very organized and hard-working teacher who teaches his material in a unique way through the use of concept maps and place of notes. I cannot emphasize enough that his teaching style made the class more enjoyable, memorable, and easier to learn and understand. Mr. G. is a dedicated teacher, and I'll never forget his class. I would also like to thank Mrs. Gray, my AP Calculus teacher, who works so hard to teach us difficult material, but also cares deeply about her students. And I want to thank Ms. Ferrera for challenging me in AP Biology, but also for being so caring and understanding as well. And aside from these teachers, I would like to recognize and thank Mrs. Tavares, Mrs. Nardi, Mrs. Mills, Mrs. Pacelli, as well as Mr. Bossino, Mr. E., Mrs. Pink, Mrs. Davis, and Mrs. Felzone. And aside from teachers, I want to thank our librarian, Mrs. O'Brien, our guidance counselors, our cafeteria staff, and our custodians for their hard work as well. And finally, I want to thank my mom, my dad, my stepparents, my sister Charlotte, my grandparents, and all of my friends for always supporting and believing in me. To the school committee, I highly recommend making AP classes not only more affordable for students, but also to offer them to freshmen and sophomores as well. Many other schools have this advantage, and I think it would be great to implement here, too. And I also think that Aponiquet would benefit from a more inviting and welcoming atmosphere academically and athletically, as our school tends to have a lot of cliques and exclusion within it. This fall, I will be attending the University of Rhode Island and studying pharmacy in the six-year Doctor of Pharmacy program with the hopes of pursuing a career in drug research. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Number three, Elizabeth Ashley.
Good evening, school committee. Thank you for inviting me here today. My name is Elizabeth Ashley, and I am ranked number three in my class at Aponiquet. I have been a member of the Laker volleyball, basketball, and tennis teams over my past four years. I have also been a member of my local Girl Scout troop for thirteen years. I was honored to be chosen for multiple sportsmanship awards in tennis and volleyball, along with a Coaches Award last year. Similarly, I have earned academic awards for my Advanced Placement Chemistry and Advanced Placement Physics classes. I was fortunate enough to earn the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship for my MCAS performance, and I was a finalist for the Founder's Scholarship for the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth. Out of my thirty-plus classes that I took throughout high school, a couple of them stand out to me. My sophomore leadership class always comes to mind when I think about classes that have molded me into the person I am today. This class was very challenging, but it taught me how to use my personality to my advantage to lead others in a meaningful way. My second class that comes to mind is my AP Calculus class. Mrs. Gray always puts a smile on everybody's face, and she always keeps us on track for our AP exam. She always made sure that we knew our material, and whether it was after school or during one of her free periods, she was always willing to help. She made the class fun and a little less overwhelming. My favorite class that I took at Aponiquet, however, was Integrated Art with Miss Lima, the Special Education Students and Paraprofessionals. I had never heard of this class before, and I was extremely excited to try something new. Every day, I worked with a different group of students with profound needs. Of course, this class was challenging, but it was also very rewarding. At the end of this course, I had to create my own lesson plan, keeping in mind which tasks needed to be modified in order for the students to be able to complete them. I had to be creative and think outside of the box for solutions, and in the end, the students made beautiful jellyfish out of paper mache. I want to thank my parents for always being there for me and for my sisters as well, and I also want to thank my friends and coaches for supporting me. After high school, I plan to attend the University of Massachusetts in Dartmouth, and I'm majoring in Medical Laboratory Science. As I leave Aponiquet, I would like to share one last recommendation to the school committee. I urge the school committee to spearhead more fundraisers for this school district. Before coming up here today, I did some research, and I found that the Freetown Lakeville District has the second lowest expenditure per student compared to surrounding districts. With such an underfunded budget, the school committee has to think of creative ways to improve the schools and equipment and classrooms in order to be competitive with surrounding school districts. District-wide fundraising initiatives would help with the underfunding we often experience. Alleviating this problem will require more than just one fundraiser, however, it will help kickstart solving the larger issue of not having sufficient funding. These events, like a car show or other inclusive activities, serve as a way to unite the community and district no matter the age or grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Second in the class, Amrtha Santash.
Good evening, school committee. My name is Amrtha Santash, and I am the Salutatorian for the Class of 2023. Academically, I have been on the honor roll for each quarter for all four years. In addition, I have been a recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Baushen Loom Scholarship, the AP Scholar Award, the Excellence in Advanced Placement Chemistry Award, and have been a National Commended Merit Scholar for my performance on the PSAT. Throughout my time at Aponiquet, I have been an active member of the varsity swim team, varsity tennis team, math team, life club, National Honor Society, as well as the Laker leader. My fondest memories at Aponiquet have been made while traveling away for sports games and attending homecomings and proms, especially junior year homecoming, where everyone got together after spending the last school year in cohorts. The most challenging and interesting classes I have taken are AP Biology and AP Chemistry because I have a passion for the sciences, and these courses enriched my knowledge at a deeper level and at a quick pace. I would like to specifically thank Mrs. Ferrera as she kept both AP Biology and Anatomy and Physiology entertaining while also preparing me well for my future studies in the sciences. Additionally, I would like to thank my parents, sister, friends, and teachers for all their support throughout the years. In the fall, I will be attending Boston University, majoring in Biology on the pre-medical track. One piece of advice I have for the school committee is to allow students to take Advanced Placement courses in freshman and sophomore year in order to let students broaden their knowledge in different fields and explore potential careers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amrtha. And number one in the class, Owen Gallagher.
Good evening. My name is Owen Gallagher, and I am the Valedictorian of the Class of 2023. Since I can remember, I have always loved school, and as a lifelong student of this district, I can attribute my love of learning to the amazing teachers and staff that we have here at every level. I have truly grown a lot here and cannot be more appreciative to our district for making me the person I am today. Like everyone else here tonight, I have been deeply involved in academics and activities here at Aponiquet and have received recognition for my role in some of these pursuits. Academically, I have been awarded Certificates for Outstanding Performance in Honors Biology, Chemistry, and Physics, as well as AP Biology and AP Chemistry. Similarly, I received the AP Scholar Award for my exam scores last year, the Francis Galishaw Award, Ron Solier Medal, and I earned the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Outside of classes, I have been involved in cross-country and track, earning varsity letters for eight seasons, as well as being a Captain and South Coast Today Honorable Mention for three total seasons. Additionally, I have previously served as a historian of the Student Council and am now the Vice President of the Class of 2023, the President of the National Honor Society, and the President of the Green Team. Although I am filled with happy memories from my time in this district, the ones that stick out have been the simple pleasures of time spent with friends in classes, on field trips, and at after-school activities. The most challenging and fulfilling class I took in high school was AP US History with Mr. Coette. His class forced me to think critically, work to comprehend and empathize with complex perspectives, and consider my own role and opinions on the events that shaped our country as it stands today. I found this to be incredibly rewarding as it helped me to visualize the origins of everything I have observed about our country and the world growing. I would also like to recognize my AP Biology and AP Chemistry classes for introducing me to the subjects that fascinate me and that I will now dedicate my life to pursuing. I would like to deeply thank all of the teachers and support staff that I have encountered since elementary school. I consider myself extremely fortunate to have never had a bad experience with a teacher in our district and would like to emphasize how extraordinary this is. Given how many teachers I have had, it speaks volumes that I have been able to draw meaningful lessons from each and every one of them, and I couldn't be more grateful to have the opportunities made available from the hard work of every teacher in the district. I would also like to thank my parents, my sisters Maggie and Neve, and my family and friends for standing with me since the very beginning. I am so lucky to have people like you in my life, and I would not be here without your unwavering love and support. Next year, I will be attending Boden College, where I plan to study biochemistry and prepare to pursue a career in biomedical research. Lastly, my one piece of advice for the school committee would be to provide more funds for student activities and achievements. In our schools, the high cost associated with participation in sports, club trips, and AP exams is a major deterrent for many students. In neighboring districts, participation in athletics and the cost of AP exams are partially or entirely funded by the school, and students are not expected to pay to challenge themselves and try new things. Here, students are required to pay hundreds of dollars per season for athletic fees and are responsible for paying nearly a hundred dollars for every AP exam they take, which inequitably discourages students from taking harder classes since the exams are mandatory. If we as a district could work to lessen the cost associated with sports and advanced classes, then more students could participate and reap the benefits of the true Aponiquet experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Owen, and thank you all. We're really here. I definitely hear the things that you have to say. We have an AP class coming in tenth grade for the first time next year, and all of you have the honor to be happy for that, not to say, darn it, I just missed out, but to share these things to make Aponiquet and Laker Nation and the entire district the best place it could possibly be. You are a group filled not only with academic achievement but honor, and we're very, very proud of you. Come see them next Friday, graduate. Yay.
So before we open up for a quick fifteen-minute recess, we do have some cookies and some water and some treats here for you folks. Wanted to open it up for comments from the committee. Anyone? Steve?
Steve first.
Yeah. Every time I do this, I get more dumb and more old hearing not only the academic accomplishments, but what's impressive is your well-rounded activities that you do. It's just not athletics, it's your volunteers, it's everything else and that. So that's going to take you far wherever you go. The other thing, that two things that stuck out to me is very... My horrible English is going to come out. Very good, very well, public speaking, right? So awesome characteristic, continue that, that's going to be great. And the fact that you guys brought an old-school tactic that you can look somebody in the eye and shake their hand is going to go really far in life. So thank you for making me feel really old. I know a lot of these, I say kids, if they either run through the neighborhood, younger siblings, so it's great to see you guys and get your accomplishments and move further in career.
So I just wanted to say, your suggestions are always so impactful, and they really do help guide those very difficult budget decisions that we make on an annual basis. And to the principal's own statement, we are now offering an AP class for 10th graders that without this kind of input, probably wouldn't have happened quite as quickly. That, and the other thing is, you guys are the Class of COVID. You did it. You did it through probably the darkest time in your lives and in ours. And I just think you are all the greatest. Congratulations for not only soldiering through all of that, but coming up and being the top ten incredible young men and women that you are.
I would just add, I'm always in awe of not only the academics, the balance of the activities, but the level of commitment in everything is unbelievable, which makes you certainly proud representation of the schools and the district. So thank you for all of that. You certainly represent what we want in this district. So thank you, thank you on so many levels. Congratulations.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And just to add to that, I mean, I think you folks need to walk out of here knowing tonight that this district is better having you guys gone through it, right? And I want you to reflect a little bit when you go home and just think about the impact that you've had on this district with all that you've done. Undoubtedly, you're going to go out there and do great, great, great things. Don't forget that Freetown Lakeville, we're a family here. Freetown Lakeville is your home. And after you go out and do great things, don't forget to come back and serve, okay?
Or at least visit. Cookies. Oh, Bob, go ahead. I still want a cookie.
Will claims he was part of a top ten when he graduated, but I can't find any corroborating evidence of that. But congratulations, and I remember you're a representative of this district now, no matter where you go, and I know you're going to make us all proud.
Go ahead, Sher. Congratulations as well, and also thank you for, especially for citing the great staff that we have here, many of whom you've said over and over again, and those who said every teacher that I had. It's just, it's a lot of work to be on the school committee. And you know, this is, as everyone says, this is the night that you sit back and you say, it's worth it all, folks, right? So thank you.
Congratulations to all of you guys. Really, I love the fact that you brought up the fundraising. I think that's something we really need to work harder on, start making sure that everybody has the same opportunity. Great job, guys.
I thank you all as well. Great achievements. I appreciate the feedback, you know, both positive and opportunities to improve. We appreciate it. Good luck to all of you.
Anything else? Okay, so with that being said, we will take a fifteen-minute recess. Come up, help yourselves, and thank you again. We're going to get back into it at this time. I promise you, top ten, you do not have to stay. I'm sure there's a lot more important things that you guys have to do. So we, yep, study for finals. Agenda item number six, giving student presentations to the school committee. Camille, hi.
Hi. So first, we want to talk about some things like that happened earlier on this month and like, just like what's happened this month so far. Like first, we wanted to talk about how AP testing went and how like, it was pretty successful. We had like the 191 students and we had a total of the 366 exams with sixteen different courses. And after that, we wanted to talk about how our musical, The Little Mermaid, it ran for three nights and it almost sold out every single night. We also want to talk about how just last Friday, May 19th, we had prom where 350 students went to go dance at the Century House in Acushnet. And then also last week, we had a couple of field trips. We had the AP Spanish class. They went to a Spanish-speaking lunch at El Mariachi. And we had, almost the entire ninth grade class, we had 146 students go to a theater in Boston to go watch the performance of Romeo and Juliet. And then just yesterday, we had 80, 11th grade students go on a trip to Bridgewater State University for a tour. And also, it was kind of like a college fair kind of thing where they all like did presentations to kind of introduce schools there to see what their interests were, and so they could like talk to people from other schools that weren't really present at the college fair we had. And so they could like talk to people from other schools that weren't really present at the college fair we had here. Also, this week, the seniors are going to finish their finals. And then next week, they'll be going into their marching rehearsals. And then on Tuesday, they're going to have their senior awards night. And on Thursday, they're going to have the senior banquet at La Barran Hills. And then on Friday, there's going to be a senior walk to all five of the schools in the district. And then they're going to have their graduation that night, June 2nd, at 6:00 PM on the Griffith Field. And this weekend also, there's going to be like a jazz band or just the band and the choir are going to be performing at like the local festival, the Lakeside Festival. They're going to be doing a performance there. And after all that, into June, after the seniors' graduation, there's going to be Biology MCAS for June 6th and June 7th. And then after that, the remaining grades, 9th through 11th, are going to start preparing for their finals, which will be June 14th.
That's a lot going on. Thanks, Camille. Any questions for Camille this time? Thank you so much. Moving on to agenda item number seven, the superintendent's report.
Camille, thank you. Congratulations to our top 10. As someone who's new to the district, I've never seen this before. And as a former high school principal, I think it's a brilliant idea. Coming from a high school that was huge, five times the size of Apponequid High School, your accomplishments stand tall with everybody that I've ever worked with. So be proud of yourselves and continue to shine on. Excellent, excellent job. So after dealing with this, everything else seems mundane, to be honest, but let's kind of get through some things. One of the things that had been talked, we had talked about it in the beginning, was to ensure that meetings across the district were not overlapping. So I'm very proud to say that only one time the entire year have we had overlaps in meetings across the district, which has been a real change. The next week or so might be a little complex for some parents, but it's been a real good, positive. And I want to thank Chris Kenworthy and Renee for their work in getting that done. The final Decennial Accreditation Report came out from NIESC. Some highlights, and we will talk about areas of growth at another time. Student pride and connections with teachers and staff, active learning in science, Unified Arts and Wellness classes, Senior Capstone and Civics Voices of Democracy projects, the increased offerings for next year, including one more AP class for sophomores, which I do want to mention that that is a major focus for me. And typically, and I want the school committee to hear this and the community to hear this, typically our seniors, our top 10 seniors have the opportunity to take 12 to 14 AP classes. That is who they're competing against. And whether or not that's too much or too little, that's not the conversation here. It's really about equity. And the idea that our top students need to be able to say, I have taken 10, I have taken 12, I have taken eight, rather than I only get to take, because it becomes a microcosm of, are we good enough? And we have to provide more opportunities. So AP Capstone is coming. I don't know if you've heard about AP Capstone Diploma Program, but we are working on that, and a lot of it is because of what you've said. NIESC talked about Aspen and the new information system, Wi-Fi improvements, and more Peramithium boards and more Peramithium boards are needed. That will be part of Ryan's tech plan and Craig's tech plan. Next steps for NIESC, February 2024, with report of progress and planning for all areas of growth. So if you're familiar with NIESC, you get your report and then you start again. And basically, it just becomes a cycle. In September, I did not think tonight was the place to talk about growth. We can talk about that in September. Let's enjoy all the fantastic stuff. Speaking of fantastic, three students qualified for the Unified State Championships, which took place today in Natick. And Special Olympics, grades 6 to 12, which is just awesome, which was held at Dartmouth High School. Tomorrow's Special Olympics at Dartmouth Stadium for grades K through 5, correct? Oftentimes in high schools, and I say this as a former high school principal, we talk about competition and we only look at it from an athletic perspective. We just won a championship, and that's the Honorable Championship. For the first time, the Honorable, how many of you are on Honorable? So for the first time, we won the championship, 2023 South Coast Championship. So what, and I got some feedback from some of the students, and it was so interesting, their response. So what do we do when soccer wins a championship? We get a banner and we put it up. We're doing the same thing for Honorable. We are getting a banner and putting it up because you deserve it. So congratulations. Two weeks ago, CPAC had its first community forum with Dr. Atkins, who spoke on anxiety and defiance. It was fantastic. 50 people were in the audience. I know, John, you were there. Parents have continued to speak with me as well as Ashley about how positive it was, and it is something we need to do more of. So we're really pleased with the fact that CPAC focused in on this and is looking to do this not just from a special education lens, but for all parents, which is vitally important. Acceptances for students at BP is 23, for Old Colony is 28, for Bristol-Aggie is 6, for a total of 57 students. We've been asked, meaning superintendent's office has been asked to speak together with the superintendent from Berkeley as well as South Coast Collaborative at a state workshop in November entitled Successfully Addressing Healthcare Staffing and Servicing Through Partnering for Mental Health Care for All Students. So we're excited about that. We will be needing a school committee representative, so I leave that to the chair to kind of decide who it will be, and I will need a name ASAP because we will go up on stage. Class sizes are provided in your packet. On June 5th, Freetown will be voting on our budget. And a shout out to our students who stood up here saying we need to do more for the budget. Come back and vote. The budget increase that's being presented is the lowest increase in over 10 years, and I want to keep saying that. Finally, on a personal note, because I know he's watching, I want to wish a very happy birthday to my son, Jack. Sorry I can't be with you, buddy, but I love you and happy birthday. Now it's time to go to bed. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Any, no, Ms. Bearfoot, can you please?
I'm a protected class, and I'm at my limit. I need to be able to do what I need to do. I emailed you regarding this already. I, I emailed you all regarding this already, that when I needed to be able to leave as a protected class, that I would raise my hand and come to the podium.
I apologize for
No, no, you have to follow ADA and accommodate.
I apologize for public participation being later in the agenda tonight due to the top 10.
You only have left agreeing with minutes and talking about old and new business.
So Ms. Bearfoot, right now you're out of order.
I am out of order. I'm out of order. You're out of order. I am in charge of you. You are an employee of the people.
I would like her to sit down. That'd be great.
I have, I have
I strongly suggest you sit down, ma'am.
So what is your name and badge number?
Officer Teige, badge number 102.
Hold on one second. I just shut the camera off.
I strongly suggest you sit down, ma'am, okay? There's going to be public participation.
What is your name and badge number?
Officer Teige, badge number 102.
So just so you know,
Ma'am, I strongly suggest you sit down.
I, I, these people, these women, we elect our servants, okay? And our servants are to do what we say, and I'm not being rude. I will tell you, children, you should really stay to the end of this because there's something very important that you need to hear.
All right, moving on.
Well, could I say something regarding Mr. Strauss's report?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you. I just want to bring this up because I've had a number of people in Lakeville who are concerned with the lowest budget
Increase.
Percentage increase, percentage increase. So that's what they're looking for because the lowest budget in 10 years is not the truth.
I didn't say lowest. I just said lowest budget increase.
Percentage increase. Just so that, just so that the people know, the taxpayers know. That's all. I'm just, thank you.
Steve? Related to the class size, I just want to make sure. Did you say 57 eighth graders are going to?
57 students.
Okay. So that is a sharp decrease of going into ninth grade. Am I reading that number correctly?
Compared to past years?
Yeah.
I don't have that number in front of me. I will get it to you.
Okay. And do we have, we don't have to do that, but as we come to the end of the year here, we have it, that's a transition year, 8th to 9th grade. We have numbers for kindergarten that we're starting to see settle. I know that's been a number that has been of a challenge earlier in the budget process, but if we come in here, as we continue to look at class size for next year, are we starting, do we have any numbers for kindergarten at all? Okay.
The elementary schools are doing registrations and getting tentative numbers right now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, the 57 number accepted, that means they're going.
They've been accepting their in.
Accepted in, confirmed going.
Correct.
Thank you.
That would lead, that would lead the number going into ninth grade to Steve's point, math, to 156. So it is, it is historically a little bit lower than what we have, but it's neither again nor there. Any other questions for the superintendent? Sure, Bob, go ahead.
Did we, did BP and the other schools have presentations of the eighth graders?
Our students went to presentations, both for BP, for Bristol-Aggie, and for Old Colony.
So they didn't come here?
They, Old Colony, Old Colony came here, BP went there.
Because many years back, all these institutions came here, but we brought our presentation too, but the advantages are coming here.
Yeah, and that's something, I saw Jack Higgins here before. I don't know if he's still here. That is something that we're looking at, the idea of when, we should do this as a one-stop shop. So allow BP, allow Old Colony, allow Bristol-Aggie, and then ourselves to talk about who we are.
I think that's a great idea.
And I think I'll bring your top 10 with us.
I'd like to see that. Brilliant institute.
Yep, yep.
Awesome. Anything else for the superintendent at this time? Awesome, okay. Moving on, acceptance of minutes. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 4/26/23. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor for accepting the motion, accepting the minutes, rather, of 4/26/23? Say hi, please.
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I abstain.
And we have one abstention. Thank you. All right, moving on to all business, FY23 budget update.
Yes, in your packet, you have your FY23 budget update for you. It's presented to you a little differently. It's not the same vertical sheet you have. It's a little different. I've done it in Excel. Your revenues are on target. Your revenues are coming in. I will point out to you that your school-based revenue is over budget, which is a good thing to be over budget on revenue, and it's due because of investment income, and you're looking at more Medicaid reimbursement for the district. So that's a good area to continue to focus on. Your expense area, I've also presented this to you differently. It is presented to you by site. It's important that at the end of the fiscal year, as we continue to move forward to the end of the fiscal year, we're working with onsite or at sites, working with principals and administrators to close out the fiscal year. My report, director's report later on in the agenda, shows, speaks to you with respect to end-of-the-year closeout and opening up FY24. There are no critical areas that I see at this particular point in regards to the expenses of the district.
Great. Any questions from Slough at this point? Steve? No? Okay, cool. Moving on, 9B is going to be our tech plan update with Mr. Macklemore and Mr. Blanchard presenting the initial 2024 to 2026 tech plan.
So when I first began, one of the first questions, Steve, that you actually asked was, we needed to begin to formalize an actual tech plan for the next few years. What we needed costs with some very specific detail. Tech is a monster, as we know, and so I want to thank Ryan and Craig for their work. As I've learned, when you sit down with tech people over the years, they begin to have conversations that none of us understand. And so I've learned an awful lot from them. But I want to thank the two of them for the work they've put into this because I think it really gets to the heart of what you asked for in the beginning as we start moving forward, which will include capital committee and everything else.
Good evening. I hope you're all doing well during this busy time of the year. The Technology Department has assembled the Freetown-Lakeville Technology Plan for 2024 to 2026, providing valuable insight into the next three years of network infrastructure, devices, phone upgrades, and newly added technology to enhance teaching and learning by effectively integrating technology across the entire district.
I'm not reading all this, just to
This is just a basic introduction of Freetown-Lakeville. We talk about our mission statement, our vision of instructional technology. And then we get into how important the technology infrastructure is. We talk about our network. Providing reliable, high-quality resources. Content filter, physical interconnections between buildings. And in each area, we have outlined the technology timeline. We have an, in each technology timeline, we have online, outlined the initiative and estimated budget costs per year with an explanation below. And each explanation explains why we're looking to fund this and what it's about. There's more details about the Chromebooks, how their habit expiration date of eight years. So you can see there's a huge amount of Chromebooks that need to be replaced by 2027. So within the timeline, it's broken down how many Chromebooks we want to purchase over the next couple of years. Assawamston, Freetown Elementary School, we're trying to get fiber between all our buildings. So it's talked about in this plan. Freetown Elementary School's new data communication closets. The Raptor Visitor Management Software implementation, more Peramithium boards. There's a breakdown of each school, how many Peramithium boards are each school. Assawamston has six Peramithium boards, Freetown Elementary has 10 Peramithium boards, George Austin Intermediate has eight Peramithium boards, Freetown-Lakeville Middle School, 15 boards, and Apponequid Regional High School has 34 Peramithium boards. This is the technology timeline for 2025. It's district network infrastructure upgrade. We talk about what the estimated cost is. More digital signage throughout this district. District Wi-Fi access points. What that's about is doing a heat map throughout the district to make sure that we have adequate APs for all the different things we want to do throughout the district. More Peramethium boards as well. We talk about the, the district infrastructure, how we want to go from a one-gig network to a ten-gig network. This, this talks about how many access points are in each building. We have thirty-four access points. And so Assawamset, Freetown Elementary has forty-four. George Austin Intermediate has forty-one. Freetown-Lakeville Middle School has sixty-two, and Aponequod High School has sixty-four. Technology timeline for twenty-twenty-six, upgrading faculty desktops, upgrading the current camera system, upgrading the phone system, centralizing the data center and servers and firewalls, and then setting up disaster recovery, adding fiber out to the press box out behind us, and continuing the purchase of Peramethium boards. Here it talks about what the staff computers are, what the students have access to. The integration of the systems, software and applications. Talks about what the current positions are. We have the Director of Technology, Network Administrator, a Data Administrator, and three computer technicians. This talks about partnering, partnering with families and communities. And references. You have any questions?
Questions from the committee?
Thank you. I know a lot of. I guess a question on funding, right? There's, there's some big numbers in here, and there's a lot of items in here that I'd say, say currently seeking a quote. So what are initial thoughts as far as funding for these type of programs, for them?
As far as the network infrastructure, we're working with an outside consultant, and we're hoping to recoup sixty percent of that through E-rate funding.
Okay.
For that project.
So that'd be good to know to align with that, and I, you know, I'm not looking for any answer on this, but I think as we take this to, you know, the version two-point-oh of this, right? Where, where's the funding piece to this? Because this is definitely something that we need to bring back to the towns. How do we get to that? I know, I read this earlier, there's some notion to, where Freetown is a grant that they're looking at for Freetown Elementary. I'd love to understand a priority of these, right? So if we don't do this, this is what's going to happen, right? What are the ramifications to that? I have to imagine that the fiber out to the press box at the, at the field is lower in priority.
And that's why it's at the end.
Yeah. But it's still, I think it's overall in that, right? Because there are going to be funds, and granted, that's ten thousand dollars, right? There are funds that we're going to work within the years that we could potentially move in here or not. So helping us to identify what these priorities were, but just as important, if we don't do this, we're not going to have X, Y, and Z, right? I know there's lack of support, lack of maintenance or anything that impact a number of these. So it'd be good to have those details at the line item, because I think it helps us prioritize and where we need to look for funding in that particular case.
Can I just speak to that a little bit too, for the funding piece?
Sure.
And I just, I, I know some school committee members have been here this long, but twenty-thirteen, we did a large infrastructure upgrade to the district. We were lucky enough to do an override for nine-hundred-three thousand dollars. It really got us to where we needed to be a decade ago. What you're looking at here is, a decade later, we have to start replacing these things again. I think if I had my priority choices, and I do, the network infrastructure is what we're concentrating on right now, because everything else relies on that network infrastructure. A new camera system goes on that. Any update to the wireless goes on that. So that's really what we're looking for. In the computer world, as everybody knows, in some fields, there's exponential change in the technology. That's what you're experiencing in the surveillance camera systems right now, in the wireless systems right now. So the things we bought ten years ago, they may still work, they can power on, but they don't give us the latest and best technology that we need for the district. And so that's really our concentration on the priority, is that infrastructure between buildings. And Ryan mentioned about the TMLP and the grant for Freetown and trying to get fiber between the buildings. That gives us a huge advantage of collapsing our network and having some savings there. So instead of running three firewalls, one here and one in each elementary, we can do one firewall that comes back through here, and we reduce our cost by two-thirds right there for that. So that's kind of, kind of the thinking we had behind this technology plan. Ryan did a super job. This is his first kind of one that he worked on here, and kind of getting him through the process. I think this is my third or fourth I've done for the district. So, you know, I appreciate the time that you gave us to hear us tonight. You know, we work closely with the business manager and the business department. We understand, and I understand, that some of this is not going to be through our, you know, it might come from capital budgets, or it might come from grants, or it might come from E-rate funding. So we may not have it in our operational budget every year. We have increased that every year. In fact, this coming year, we've increased our hardware budget. And what I mean by hardware is Chromebooks and desktops and things like that. Other projects which have a high price tag, we do have to go out and look for unconventional funding for that.
So related to that, it'd be good to know what we expect from a cost savings if we implement this, right? So, because that's going to be important as we talk to the communities, it's more of the fact of, while there's a price tag of tax.
Right.
We expect the savings, and, and potentially there's an ROI to that. So I think that's just as important here. I'm also going to make an assumption that these costs include implementation, ongoing maintenance or support, especially when some of these pieces, I know that's been something that's discussed in the past.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then my last statement, I know resources is always an issue. We run with a very lean staff there. I'll continue to say, we have a talented student base. Why we don't have an internship program, are you students to handle some of a lot of these technologies to offset some of the workload on the team? It's, we should be looking at that just from a standpoint of, these students are looking for jobs. It'd be a great opportunity from a resource component.
So that's a conversation actually Mr. Principal Desert and I are having next week about setting up internships. It becomes an issue of credit versus pay, but the idea for, for some students who are looking to either fill some gaps within their, their schedule, to get something on their resume, to, to provide some opportunities to work in multiple areas. I mean, we've talked about it in terms of Lake Cam. We've talked about, you know, eventually I want to see a TV studio here. You know, there are so many things that I think we can do in-house that will end up saving us money. Beyond that, though, I want to go back to a comment that Craig made in terms of, we can turn on certain things, but, but the reality is, eventually, it's going to turn off. And, and some of these things are priorities in terms of not just networking, our security systems, our cameras, which are, the school committee spent a, a lot of money on and worked really hard to get them, but like anything else, eventually will become obsolete. Parts will not be available, and then you start dealing with some of your safety concerns, which becomes, certain cameras aren't working. And once they go down, you can't get them back because they're so old, there are no parts left. So this is a longstanding conversation. I don't think it's necessarily about having the best in, in all of that, but it's about really being smart as to where, I agree with you, where our priorities need to go.
An apology to the chair. I'd like to have the business manager, I know we have a technology revolving fund, but I believe that fund right now is set up that we cannot fund that externally. You know, I have that correct, or maybe some research needs to be?
Yes.
Right? So we probably need to relook at that as we look at future year spending as an investment strategy around technology. Do we set money aside that that is geared towards technology? Because right now, we don't have that capability. We have a fund that does with Chromebook insurance, but we don't, and, and that probably just needs to be quantified. I could be wrong, but I think that's something that we can look at to, as we look at small increments into that to pay for bigger items down the road.
Steve, you had your hand up.
I did. Thank you for this plan. Can you speak more about the Chromebook replacement plan and the expiration policy? And maybe connection to, I see on the chart, there's a number of different vendors that provided the Chromebooks. And if there's any value add to going with one vendor over the other, and how it impacts warranties and that sort of thing.
Yep. So, so when the, when the Chromebooks are manufactured, that's when the date, the born date is. So if we buy a Chromebook that's about, let's say, thirty-one hundred, and we bought it a year later, the expiration date is still eight years out, regardless if we bought it a year after. So because of the purchasing, and because of COVID, and we're trying to ramp up, to get Chromebooks, we got what we could get that was available. We have been working over the past year with Dell, and we've been working to get in all Dell Chromebooks. So we purchased thirty-one hundreds last year. End of life is twenty-twenty-eight. This summer, we're purchasing the thirty-one tens, and the expiration date of that is twenty-thirty. So it's eight years from the date that the Chromebook is born. And every three years, there's a new Chromebook that will come out, and the date will further bump up. So it's a constant revolving door of devices that we'll have to continue to purchase over a long period of time that won't go away.
Right. And because of supply and demand, future plans would probably be primarily more Dell products?
Yes. So for example, right now, we've been buying directly through Dell, and that takes out like the middleman, so you're not paying a five percent increase. If you went to like a local person, there's a five percent markup. Because we're going to Dell, we're able to negotiate and get better pricing. So when we talked about, back in October, about pricing, we gave you an estimated retail cost of four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. When we got a quote to purchase at the end of this year, it's down to two-sixty. So it fluctuates, and like I had them lock that in for two months, hoping that we'll make that purchase at that price. It could go up. It's all price and demand and who's ordering, and every school district's facing the same issues we have of purchasing Chromebooks and keep them revolving and everything like that. One of the big reasons we have to keep purchasing these is because we need to make sure that they up to date, they have the security that they need, that they are going to be good for MCAS testing, because there's certain versions of the operating system that you need to take the MCAS testing. Once we, once they become end of life, you can't update the OS on them, so it's a tough thing.
No, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could add just one more thing to, to the different models at the different schools, and that's, it is a reflection of the COVID terror, right? We had some lined up, chain, chain of, you know, the supply chain failed us. We couldn't get some ACERS. We ended up with some Samsung models, so we got that in the mix now. What we've done this year is tried to consolidate one model at each of the schools. So the middle school's got all ACERS. We're trying to get Grace with all Dells. We're going to have three of four classes, classes here with Dells. So we're eventually going to move those in and get a more homogeneous model configuration for us, so. And the other thing I just want to emphasize about that price, I know back in October, you guys were all shocked about that, and I felt that we could get something better, and we did, directly to Dell, so.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. Macklemore, when do you retire, sir?
In August.
So if we do not see you before now and then, I, I just want to kind of publicly thank you for, for your years in the district and, and all you've done for the schools.
Yeah.
Years upon years upon years, you've done it with bare-bones staff, through good times, through bad.
Yeah.
And just from the committee, I just want to thank you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, this is actually my twenty-fifth year I'm finishing up here, so I really appreciate that very much. I have a whole new life, I have a whole nother life with the federal government too before this one, so. I think it's time to retire.
Well deserved.
Well deserved. You've earned it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, down to agenda item number ten, which is new business, Reed's and South Coast Education Collaborative. There are votes required for this. So do you want to tee that up, Superintendent Strauss?
So, school committee needs to vote pursuant to chapter forty, section four A, in order for myself as superintendent of schools to be appointed to serve as the Freetown-Lakeville District Rep on the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries.
And then for South Coast Educational Collaborative, again, pursuant to chapter forty, section four E, I am asking to be appointed to serve as the Freetown-Lakeville District Rep on the Board of Directors of South Coast Educational Collaborative.
Oh, move. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just for clarification, Mr. Chair, we do these every year.
Every year.
Correct.
So just in case people don't know, this is not something we're glossing over. These, these appointments are necessary and annual.
Yep. Thank you. Ms. Fox? So that motion carries unanimously. I don't believe there are any, anyone who was opposed. I don't, I don't believe there are any abstentions either at this point. So moving on, agenda item number eleven, we have director reports. Ms. Farrell.
So let me take over for a second. One of the conversations that we had as a, with the school committee and superintendent was length of, of meetings. So for this meeting, because our focus really was on the top ten, you all received information from Ms. Farah Welch, from Ms. Blay and, and Ms. Fleming. So I am going to change it a little bit and, and ask, do you have questions that you can direct towards them?
Perfect.
And we can readdress whether or not that's a comfortable way to go, but I thought for tonight, it, it made sense.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Ms. Barron?
So I have a number of them from Ms. Welch. On your business office, Kim Fire, part three. We have two payroll-related situations that need correspondence. Can you elaborate a little on that?
I took the details out of the memo to the school committee because they were personnel-related. But certainly, what they, what we're working with is benefits administration from our open enrollment that we had had. That was my public service announcement. We also, that's one particular area that we're working with. Another particular area that we're focused with is TSA contributions and deductions from employees' paychecks, and the timing that the vendor, not the district, but the vendor, is taking in booking those contributions that were deducted to their accounts. So we're working with the TSA vendor in wanting to ensure that our employees are timely in that deposit. So those are the two pieces that we're trying to be helpful with our staff with.
I'm sure your staff are very interested in that second one especially. Through the chair, can I ask a couple more questions?
Absolutely. The floor is yours.
I'm interested in knowing about the first student bus update. We were looking at rerouting perhaps. Last we heard, there was a meeting, I think you were at that meeting, it was probably maybe your first week.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if Steve, were you at that meeting also? I'm asking for a student to do some rerouting. Have we got anything back from free student?
So we did get information back from first student. It was not what we asked for, so we sent it back to them. They, and, and we have a great relationship with them. We're very open. It was a very positive conversation. It is a tremendous amount of work to look at rerouting. And so they were hesitant, and, and we, they, they gave us some justifications as to why not, why they shouldn't be rerouting, and, and we sent back very directly that, okay, we understand that, but we want to see you reroute and see what the changes are. See how it helps our students, whether it hurts our students in terms of time on bus, or whether it decreases. So we are still waiting on that.
Okay, thank you. One more?
Yeah.
The project. The project, is there an update on the project planning for Assawamset for the summer? Is everything on schedule? Do we know when they're going to start?
The Windows Indoors Project?
The Windows Indoors Project?
Yes. We have a meeting tomorrow over at AES with the Owners Project Manager. It's an onsite meeting. We have Zooms every two weeks with the Owners Project Manager, the Construction Manager, the Architect, Greg Bogdan, myself, Alan, Ari Sky, excuse me, Ari. And last week's meeting, we reviewed priority areas of our project. I'm sorry, this looks like a bunch of, this is your building. This is the Windows and Doors Project. We are reviewing schedule that is in draft right now because we don't have all of our definitive supplies and materials for latches and windows and other things for the project. We don't have a deliverable date just yet. That is forthcoming. Tomorrow's meeting, we'll be at the site with the owner to introduce the Owners Project Manager to staff, to talk about what classrooms should look like, what the project will be like from the outside in. That's the terminology that we're using. Those windows are coming out from the outside in. So the project is ongoing. We're starting to meet weekly soon, and we're meeting weekly onsite as opposed to Zooming. So that project is rolling.
So I think it's important to understand that, and I think it's a great question, Sherri, that we are working really in a three-tiered approach. So first of all, it's letting teachers know how they need to take care of their classrooms. Outside in means we're not coming inside the room pushing the window out that way where we're disrupting everything here. We're pulling the window from the outside, meaning there's much less impact. So we're going 10 feet from the window is how far things have to be pulled, and that's really going to be done by onsite management.
Yes.
Teachers need to box some things up and that kind of stuff. The other piece is, is we are determining now where Principal Penaltz and her secretary are going to go. Technically, their office could be open. I am not comfortable bringing parents in who are looking at tours. That's not going to happen. It can't. With all the construction going on, so we're going to house them probably at the middle school with plenty of signage that says if you have questions, and we're going to send out as much mailers, and there's going to be a very large sign that says, "Main Office is not open. Please go to," with addresses. So that's the second piece of it. And then the rest is just, we've been thankful that seniors didn't care because snow days, actually, you wanted us to have snow days because you didn't have to make them up. But with no snow days, what that means is we're starting earlier. It's a matter of materials more than anything else. But we're in a pretty good place with it. The goal again is to be completely done before the first day of school. So we've also looked at, if that can't happen, making sure that classroom windows are done. Hallway windows, those kinds of things can be done at night because they will never be working during school day.
Right.
They will come on a second shift. They don't want to, but if they have to, they will come second shift. But that will be hallways, that will be things that are not part of disrupting teaching and learning so that teachers can have their classrooms set for day one.
I have one more, Will.
Yeah, yep. And then Steve.
Steve, is this on Windows and Doors?
It is.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm assuming this also includes the maintenance schedule, right?
Yes.
Because a week and a half of when our crewmates get in there to get it.
Yeah, poor Greg is, yes.
We're even taking a look at deliveries. We're alternating where we might have deliveries for large equipment. Maybe we can do it in a different building and then deliver the week before, two weeks before school. We're looking at food service. Our food service delivery is going to come in there with a big Cisco truck at some point. So we're trying to plan out all of those kinds of large deliveries and getting the building ready.
And the playground will be open in the summer, surprisingly.
Yeah, it is important. And we also have to think about teachers getting in there before school starts.
Yep.
Maybe some discussion about perhaps weekend, not that I want to see them give up their weekend, but I know the teachers want their rooms to look great when they welcome their children. Last question. What other summer facility projects do we have planned at any of the other schools? Do we have any other things happening at the other schools?
So I think three months ago, we talked about the vestibule project and safer school grants. I have been on the phone, I probably owe Senator Roderick's lunch. We've spoken so much. He's been fantastic. The grant that we applied for is $3 million, not for us, but for, that's how much is available to the towns in the Commonwealth. $24 million was asked for by schools. So, you know, I've been around education long enough to know, usually those kinds of grants, when they're so big, will go to very large cities generally. So, but I have no guarantee. Senator Roderick's is, Roderick's is working hard with us. We are working on an appropriation for, and the number is $75,000 for an appropriation from the state. Senator Roderick's will have that information that's being voted on this week. I was hoping to have that for today. That will immediately go towards the vestibule project, which will take care of the three vestibules here on campus. Freetown's done. Assawamset will be done because of the Windows and Door Project. What it won't do is it won't give cameras inside the vestibule, but we have money appropriated that we are looking at to continue with that. We had a water scare the other day. Seniors were hoping to get out of school as soon as possible. They were disappointed when the water came back on. There was no, it was an internal, and I don't mean that person problem, it was a problem with a sensor did not go off that generally does. I am thankful for Greg on a regular basis because he knows these systems so well. And as students were getting all excited that they were going home, within about 15 minutes, he had it figured out. Again, we can't take that chance because no water is no school, and it was campus-wide. So that is going to be replaced. We don't know what the cost is going to be, but we will, we'll find it because we have to. Without water, we don't survive.
I think the other thing we have Greg doing as well with summer projects is he sent out a spreadsheet.
Yep.
And it's Greg's spreadsheet. It's quite darling, actually. And it's by tabs. He did all the tab work, and he listed out everything, and then he duplicated things that need to happen at each and every school. And so we're meeting with Greg on Greg's summer project work and staffing, as well as his end of the year purchase orders and things like that. So we're working a lot with Greg and with his knowledge of the district is very impressive.
And right now, this is the typical time as the school year ends where some of our custodians will take their vacation time before it ramps up. I do want to say, and I think it was Jocelyn who thanked all the custodians, and, you know, I don't think they get enough credit. We are, we are short-staffed in terms of what we really should have. So they do a remarkable job here. So they will get it done. They always do. Large projects, I mean, Capitol Committee is meeting tomorrow, and that's going to be part of our conversation as to how we prioritize and where we really need to go. So we'll probably have more information on that at the next meeting.
I was going to ask about water, and you brought up water. That's the last thing I was going to ask about. Was the problem that we had the other day, was it because of the problem that we had about a month ago where we were losing a lot of water?
No. So what happened was, we on average hold 6,000 gallons that funnels through all three. Generally, what happens is we start to go low, there's a shut-off, so it doesn't go too low. It didn't shut off. So when there was no water, it's because there was zero water available. We had to re-flush it and bring it all back, and they brought it back quickly. It's not as if we ran out of it. It just wasn't, it was held up. So if you think about it, it just stopped right here. We had to reopen it. But thankfully, Greg knew how.
But at the last meeting, I believe it was the last meeting, you had just found a problem, and I think we were losing like 40,000 gallons.
15,000 gallons. It's due to a leak that he is trying to detect. It's different from this particular situation. It's within the campus or on the campus. And on Saturday, Greg and a company out of Connecticut, I believe, came in and tried to identify where the leak was coming from. They observed some activity, I'd call it activity, through their metering devices that they had outside, towards the middle school under a sidewalk. They brought in a backhoe entrenched from one end of the building where they thought that they identified where the leak was. The leak was not where they, everything was intact. So it's literally a process of elimination by going through where our water lines are, where the shut-offs are in the ground are, where they're redirecting the water, and trying to identify activity within those shut-offs. So it's underground work. You're looking at metering and camera raying and things that I don't quite frankly understand. But these are the technicians that have been brought in to identify that particular water issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve? I'm concerned about the vestibule project, that we're, it's holding up from a funding perspective because this type of project just doesn't, if we get the funding, it just doesn't start tomorrow. So what's the lead time? Like what do we, we have a very short window of half of June, July, and August to do this construction, to have it complete in time to be back in school?
So it's not as complex, the construction is not as complex as it sounds. It's really adding panic bars inside the doors. It's not adding camera systems, it's not doing any of that. Greg, before he left on vacation, and I contacted the vendor who gave us, so we have three bids, you know, we contacted the vendor. He can turn it around in two and a half weeks. So.
So once we give him the go, within two and a half weeks, he can start?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's an important project here, and I know money is tied across the board here. Is there any particular reason why, and I look to the checkbook writer here, we wouldn't just fund this out of E and D, and any appropriations we get just filters back into that? Why wouldn't we just get this project going, so, because it's an important piece, right? And I think this is something that, it's a one-time cost, it's greatly suited for an E and D. Let's just move forward with it, and then any appropriations, we do it. I don't want to wait on, Senator Roderick does a great job, I don't want to wait on him to do this important project.
So the answer, I think, is yes. But what I would like to do is take a look at the bids and find out the money and find out exactly what the, I haven't been pretty to the bid process or the discussions, find out the value that I'm talking about, and recommend to the superintendent and to the School Committee how to fund the vestibule project for the purposes of ensuring it's done by September. There you go.
Yeah, we could add that to the next meeting. I appreciate that. I think it's just too important to say.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Chris Farrell, Ms. Fleming, or Ms. Blay at this point?
I just wanted to tell Ashley.
Great job on your report.
Yep.
Numbers are scary, but.
Well, yeah, we already have a quarter, right? 24. That's a quarter of the way to 100. So just wanted to emphasize that. And of those 56 that Alan had mentioned that got accepted to other schools, 17 of those are special education students.
Really?
Yeah. And that's across school colony, BP, BA, and then other schools. There's a couple going to Diamond, a couple going to Bristol Stang. Bishop Stang.
Stang, I knew what you meant.
So the state has made sure that vocational schools can no longer, in their system of choosing students, cannot use some criteria, including special education, including behavior, including grades. So the system has changed dramatically to provide opportunities for all students.
And it certainly needed to. So that's excellent news.
Steve?
Is that changes tighten up, I'll call it a loophole, where they can go to a vocational and these can send them back to their home district after October 1st?
That's still an option.
Still an option.
That's still a problem.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I feel like, though, knocking on wood, that this year, we had a very successful run with our students that got accepted last year. Our freshman class remained out, so we didn't have any kids that came back.
I mean, again, just to be clear, that's not a, that's not a student issue, right? That's, that's a comeback, it's a non-starter, no question, we're going to support them. But it's just one of those that it just seems awfully.
So the regs have changed a little bit, so don't think of it as traditional private school, where a private school can simply say, "But."
Yes.
And you're going back to your home school. There needs to be a very specific 37, 8 and 1/2, 37, 8 and 3/4, something tremendously egregious, and then there has to be conversation. There has to try some ressort of justice kind of approach. So it's not as simple as leave, as I think people think.
Ms. Blay, I know I have it here somewhere, but I cannot find it, but I know I read that you are starting to accept applications for role model students in the pre-K.
Yes, so the pre-K's been open. So that might have been in my last report. I believe it is closed at this point, our preschool application. So we do have a waiting list.
We have a waiting list.
Our four-year-old class is closed, obviously, because we have students that are bumping up from the three-year-old room. But if there's anything that changes, we will open it up to kids that are on our list.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm not happy when we have a waiting list, and we almost always, we always have a waiting list. That is true. That is true, yes.
And then the only other sort of red flag for me is still 90 evals.
Yeah.
We're coming up to a timing of end of school year, and how are we going to do in getting those completed?
Well, we, luckily, at this point, when we get a signed consent that comes in, we're at the point now, as of May 9th, where we have to carry the evaluations over into the new year. But any evaluation that started or was received before May 9th, we have to conduct and hold a meeting before the end of the school year. So we are up against the wire, but we will get it done. We always do. We have a wonderful group of psychologists, one of which unfortunately just resigned because the workload is too much. And she's absolutely amazing, and she was only at Gray's in the high school, and she was very overwhelmed. So I can't imagine how the elementary psychologist feels because she's the one that's getting hit the hardest with these referrals and reevaluations. However, if we look at this resignation on a more positive note, we are looking at reorganizing our psychological staff so that we can make evaluations more equitable across the board, which is something I'm sure you all picked up on as I go through my evaluations every month, that the elementary is so heavy. So we are looking at splitting up the elementary, which includes Gray's, and then having a psychologist, the middle school, and then high school will get support through the psychologist as well as some contracted services that we have in the budget.
John? I see one quick question. Do you know if the, is the psychologist able to finish out the school year?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yep. And she's hoping to come back next year and help out if we need it. And we do have, again, money in the budget for that as a contracted service provider, but it's just so unfortunate we're losing her. She's really liked at the high school, she's really well-liked at Gray's, and we've gotten nothing but great reports from staff and parents and administration. And, I mean, I've developed a really close relationship with her as well. It's just, it's very sad. But I think it speaks to what I've kind of been talking about all year, that people are stretched very thin, and the workload is very high, and that is, I guess, what it is.
Yep. Go ahead, Steve.
So, last thing, Special Olympics.
Yes. A positive thing, yeah.
Let's go out on a positive note on that, right? So it's always great to see the results of that. I know a couple of years ago, we brought a big shebang, there was a police escort, everything. Weekend steals continuing that project.
Oh, it's tomorrow?
Yeah, so FES still continues to do the police escort. So they will, so tomorrow, our elementary group is going. We leave from Gray's, go to pickup. We're all riding the big yellow bus too, which is very exciting for our kids in the programs who don't usually take the big bus. They usually take a van. So we'll start at Gray's, we'll go pick up at FES, we'll head to Dartmouth Stadium, which is right behind Bishop Stang, so the old high school. We'll spend the morning into the early afternoon there. We'll leave at about 12:45 after our pizza party and dance party, and then we will come back, and then FES will have a police officer that escorts from Gray's back to. police officer that escorts from Gray's back to FES, which is, from what I'm understanding, a routine every year.
It's a tradition now.
It's a tradition now.
It's a highlight.
What I would like, I think, this is my second year facilitating the Special Olympics event, and this year, I feel like I was even more involved than last because I was kind of jumping in newer last year as a district-wide position or personnel. But I'm hoping that we can even bring some police officers to the event, because I know Dartmouth is always very heavily stacked with officers to celebrate the event, and I'm hoping that we can kind of bring some with us to represent Free Town Lakeville. So that's my hope for next year.
Great, thank you.
It's great. So exciting.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your report. Any other business that may probably come before the meeting? Oh, Jen?
So, a parent had suggested, and I'd love to entertain this, a lot of people, a lot of parents, would like to attend more school committee meetings. And as I've said in the past, I think that that is great. So I'm suggesting that we possibly entertain, and I did reach out to Lisa Pacheco just briefly to ask her if she could somehow facilitate this, is possibly having either volunteers from the high school, or make a paid position for a babysitter, so that more parents can start attending our meetings.
Great idea. It's a great idea.
Yep.
It's a great idea. Any other?
Yeah, I just have a quick, really not school committee, but if any of you 18-year-old students are around on July 27th and you want to be part of a commuter rail simulated incident, please get in touch with me. I need victims and volunteers. And if anybody knows how to put fake blood on, I'm really into this. We have about 400 first responders that are going to be participating, and we need 75 victims, I have 31.
Victims? Yeah, you get cool.
Victims!
Hearing, hearing. Perfect.
So just get in touch, the superintendent can get in touch with me, there's a link that I have to send to you to fill out. And you can be younger than 18, but if you are younger than 18, it requires that you be accompanied by a parent or guardian.
They have to be a victim, too?
I wanted to be a victim, but I'm a controller. Who knows?
Oh.
All right, then Bob, one last thing?
I was up, I was up to the Free Town Elementary School today for another matter, but the entry process worked like it should work. But while I was there, I noticed the secretary, there's only one secretary there after 12 o'clock, and she's up to the window, back, up to the window, back. I mean, is there any way that a button could be installed at a desk so that she doesn't have to get up as often and go back and forth?
She has to get up in order to work the raptor, raptor system?
Right, right.
And...
That area is too small for a desk.
Yeah, the area is too small, we can't have desks there, we can't...
But isn't there a way to put the entry button in another position?
There is an entry button at her desk, but she has to come up. She has to be able to see them, get there, because you have the window...
It seems like an awful lot of waste of her time.
All of our secretaries are...
Back and forth, back and forth. Only one secretary there.
So it's part of the, you know, ongoing safety is that our secretaries are being asked to do a lot more.
Right. I just don't know if any, any way to expedite the process where it minimizes the number of times she has to get up and back.
More secretary.
From 12 to 3, there's so many people coming to that door. I mean, she might as well not have a desk, she might as well just have a stool there and look out the window. Right. I'd like to have somebody look into that, to see if there's any possibility of minimizing the number of trips she has to make to go to the window.
I think that's happening at Assawomse, too.
Yeah, it's happening at Gray's, it's happening at the middle school, and it's happening at the high school.
Is there only one secretary on at all of those schools?
The high school has more.
The high school has more. Middle school has one, Judy Ashley.
Gray's has one.
Gray's has one.
Has one at that time.
Part-time, starting after 12 o'clock.
Right. Okay. Anything else? All right, obviously, Agenda Item 13, we have public participation. First and foremost, guys, I want everyone's in the office here, the auditorium here to speak. So I thank you guys for waiting around. I think, usually, we do try to have public participation as far up on the agenda as we can, so we certainly appreciate you hanging around and taking a night away from your families. We will be looking to kind of bump it back up the agenda to try to accommodate you folks a little bit more. But with that being said, public participations shall be in accordance with our district policy, right? Each speaker will be permitted a maximum of two to three minutes, based upon the number of requests that we have, during which time they can speak about topics within the scope and responsibility of the school committee. Okay? So with that being said, please just come up to the microphone, state your name, which town you're from, and we can go from there, you're more than welcome. Ms. Barefoot?
Hi, yes. So I have three things that are related to school committee. One is the 4-5-23 Agenda. The part with my name attached to it is probably about 10% correct my name. And the issue is, is that I had a very long conversation regarding loss of licensure for Will through DESI for grooming and inappropriate sex with a student. And I got that information from DESI, and I was very matter-of-fact and very polite and kind to give you the opportunity to explain to us why and how that happened, and to help with safety, which will be my secondary thing that I am going to discuss, because this is a huge safety issue, just like COVID, okay? And what the agenda says is that this was a social media rumor. So that was made up from somebody and applied to the agenda. I never said that. I got my information from DESI. Then I forwarded you all the DESI agreement that Will signed admitting to this crime to this child, okay? With that said, there is a safety issue involved. DESI's main thing that they do for teachers and principals that they have to go and investigate is grooming and inappropriate sex with children. Children that we, the parents, put our trust in all of the people that are around you, around teachers. Now, during COVID, DESI gave all of the safety guidance that you said you had to listen to. You had to listen to the safety guidance in your agreement, Will, two times. Now, I've already asked nicely if you would step down, I asked for the board to please support us to have you step down so you wouldn't be at events and with children, knowing that this is an issue of yours, it's a psychological issue. DESI asked in your agreement that you not obtain any, A-N-Y, any position at, not around, not behind, not next to, but at a public school. That's what they said. And they said, "Any position." Doesn't matter if the town pays you, like you emailed me to say, "Go talk to the town, may pay my salary." No. The reason why I came up earlier to say, "When we, the people, vote you in, you have an obligation to us, you take an oath to the Constitution," it's important for these children to hear, "and we're in charge." So DESI's in charge of your license, but we, the parents, and there are numerous parents who are very upset that then the school committee, after that discussion and after seeing the DESI paperwork, made you chair. So now the agenda is incorrect, okay, to say that it was a rumor, and then the school committee makes you chair, so that parents would say, "That was just a rumor." Oh, goodness, they never would have made him chair if that was the truth. It's all factual, you signed off on it.
So, Ms. Barefoot?
The education needs to be on grooming.
Ms. Barefoot?
Grooming.
You've had your three minutes.
Oh, no.
You've had your three minutes.
I'll call for my three minutes.
I'll call for my three minutes. Thank you.
Sure.
We worked on this together, so...
Sure.
Thank you.
It's very important, as a community, that we protect the children in our schools. We own the schools, the parents and the voters own the schools, and it's extremely important to protect the children. With grooming, Will, you check off all the boxes. I will send the entire school committee, okay, the paperwork to show the things that you have done as of recent, and what you did to that child that checks all the boxes. You need to be rehabbed, you need to follow the DESI plan. And we, the parents, have a right to instruct you, under the Constitution of Massachusetts and the federal constitution, to step down. And that's what I'm here to do, is to instruct you tonight to step down.
So at this point, you're at six minutes, and if I do the math correctly, you have three more, Ms. Barefoot. Go right ahead.
I'm instructing you to step down for about, I don't know, 200, 300 parents, I think more than who voted for you, past students, teachers in this school, and these two communities for safety. I am instructing you, per the Constitution, to step down. Thank you.
As always, thank you for your insight, Ms. Barefoot. Next.
Hi, I'm Chris Cronin. Thank you for giving me this time. It was nice to hear all of the seniors kind of share their experience being here at Aponequit, and we've been working with this school for about 18 years with our children to go through. But I wanted to come here tonight and share an experience I had at Aponequit High School that was different than I've had in the past. And that was, my son, while attending the school, has identified and as a transgender student. And so I found out from the community by a grandparent of a person in the school, they had reached out to me because they thought I knew, and I had no idea. And this had been going on in school with his name change and affirming him in the opposite sex for about four months. So four months had gone by, and his teachers and classmates have been calling him that. So we, as a family, didn't know, we didn't respond, we didn't have any supports and services in place, and that concerns me, as a parent, as a therapist in this community, that when a child is presenting in such a different way, that adults that are aware of that do not reach out to the parents. And just in parental rights, we have the rights as parents to just give a space and capacity as a family or an individual works that out, and we were denied that. We contacted the superintendent and the school committee to find out what the policy was, because when I looked at the parent handbook, there wasn't anything in the handbook to address this. There wasn't any, I had reached out, I think, to the superintendent, was there a discussion minutes about this so that I could see and reference, but there was nothing. So we went and met with the principal of the school and sat down with her to find out, you know, what are the guidelines that you're using, that we were denied parental consent, and there were no guidelines. There's no guidelines written in the school policies on the website or in any agenda that I could be handed to be used. This is, these are the steps we took. So then I was told that it was a guidance policy, so I asked if I could have a copy of the guidance policy, but there was no guidance policy. Then I was told it was principles, and I said, "Could I have a copy of those principles then, that you're using to make this decision?" But there was nothing in writing that could be given to me. So because there was no policy, there was no guidelines, there was nothing in writing, I submitted a paper, a letter requesting that our son's name be turned back and referred to as his sexual orientation birth. And I was told that the principal would have to then speak to the superintendent and legal counsel that works with the school. So my husband and I waited for the principal to get back to us, and she did, and they denied our request. So I'm not, you know, we're, why are you denying our request? There's nothing in written policy, and we are the parents asserting our rights for our child. And so as we, we met with my son and we found out more and more about this, there were issues that came up, part of the disclosure. I'm very concerned with, and I just want to bring those to you because I think they need to be addressed. So when my son had identified, there was a partial disclosure, but he did not initiate the disclosure. So a teacher approached him and initiated the disclosure without him asking or saying. And then the teacher initiated, they were asked for, does he want the referral to the guidance? So my son did not ask for that. That was initiated by the teacher. In that same class, there was a time where the teacher had shared that there was confidentiality in the class, and so it's that in this class stays in the class. Again, that's applied to me as a therapist and as an adult, that there would be another adult trying to create a relationship that's secret and separate from the parent. That's just concerning to me. Why would an adult want children to keep secrets from their parents, especially the topics that were discussed in this class? And as a parent, I would want to have open communication with my child about that. In addition to that, just the sense of, I'm not sure of the ethic codes for educators. I know as a licensed mental health counselor, if I were to tell an adolescent about confidentiality, I would have to explain limits of confidentiality. I'd have to make sure that they understand informed consent. And at no point was that done to my son or my class, and there are other students in the class that were affected by this, and there were no resources or check-ins from the school.
So, Ms. Cronin, I don't want to cut you off because your voice is important, but we are trying to limit comments to three minutes. The school committee, moving forward, we're not going to be responding to any public comments, but I promise you that we will kind of get back to you, and I think the policy statement is a good one, and I think that's something that our policy committee needs to look at moving forward. So I will, I will be in touch with you.
Because I really do think that parental consent is my issue with this, and as well as education and professional development around what we say in doing classes, and as well as additional support to students that are being affected by disclosures that aren't the instead now.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Hi. My name's John Cronin. I think my wife did a lovely job. She was very calm for the situation that we have in front of us. I don't envy any of your roles. It's a tough role, I imagine. But can you imagine being a parent and finding out from the community that your son is transgender? The school knew all along and separated us. My statement here, I'm going to read it so I get it right for you. As my wife mentioned, we're asking the school committee to create a policy requiring the Free Lake schools to contact parents on all matters of disclosure by a student. This is, this is within your obliged responsibility as a school committee. Norman Oral, our state representative, told us that the law was written with autonomy for school committees to create their own policy on this matter. Currently, as my wife stated, you don't have a policy. Excuse me one second. Not only are we asking you to create a policy requiring schools to contact parents, we're asking the school to change our son's name back to his given name. This will allow us the privacy to work with our son, as parents should. By ARHS continuing to affirm our son under his preferred name, you are dividing and separating families. This is a community of families. You're hurting us. My wife and I and my son are living in a nightmare because there's no policy. There is a law. And this law, I'm going to read the law, is 603 CMR 23.01. This is application of rights. I think the school is only applying part of this law. The part where, this part here, Section 1, "These rights shall be the rights of students upon reaching 14 years of age upon entering the ninth grade, whichever comes first. If a student is under the age of 14 and not yet entered ninth grade, these rights shall belong to the student's parents." At the time of the disclosure, my son was 16 years old. This is important for the next part. If a student, this is Section 2, "If a student is from 14 through 17 years of age or has entered the ninth grade, both the student and his/her parent or either one acting alone, either one acting alone, shall exercise these rights." We were denied by the principal, the superintendent, and your legal counsel the right to change our son's name back. In the law, I have the right to come in every day and change it back, and he has the right to come back and change it back. We're the parents, we know best. Let us parent our child. I leave with this question. What would, what would you, hold on. I leave with this question, that I would like each one of you on the board, on the board, to give a sample reply. Do you support schools keeping information confidential between your student and the school faculty? Or do you support parental rights? Finally, my wife and I would like to be informed when a decision is made and announced, as we intend to attend that meeting. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public participation at this time? All right, at this point, we are going to adjourn open session and enter executive session, but I think that has to be a roll call vote in order to do so, so Ms. Rogers, please.
Bill Stinkwit?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Dean Fox?
Yes.
Steve Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Baran?
Yes.
Ben Horn?
Yes.
Fox Fox?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Chair, just a point.
No, we've already, we've adjourned open session.
Okay, well, I'll just speak to the public.